We're going to bring this study session to order. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, we're going to go on to item two, which is the Yuma Elementary School District Number One Governing Board will be conducting a study session focusing on information related to the district's hybrid model of instruction. Topics will include Yuma County COVID-19 data and Arizona Department of Health Services guidance, as well as district-level data related to enrollment, student engagement, employee surveys, and the District Number One mitigation plan. The governing board, however, will take no action at this study session. Mr. Sheldahl.
Yes, thank you, members of the board. Thank you for coming today for a special study session. The purpose of today's session is to review information related to our hybrid model of instruction and discuss local data. And you have some materials in front of you in a folder. And the materials that are in your folder, I will also project on the screen. One of the one of the things we're going to project that I printed out, I would have been really thorough. I would have told you to bring some kind of a magnifying glass like my great-grandma used to have when she wanted the paper. Because it's really small on the paper, but I think it'll be better on the screen. Otherwise, it's probably vice versa. So as we go through, things in your packet should be in order. And our goal today is we want to give you some good information. Now that we're on our 60th day of school today, today's day 60. And we have some guests today to share some information as well. And we want to give you a chance to ask questions and just give a chance for some open discussion along the way. And I just hope that today can be two hours of where we all come away with better information and a better understanding and common understanding, common knowledge.
When do you foresee us making a decision? Like what? Today's our study and then are we like next board meeting or?
Well, we could, that could be, I mean, the board can ask for an action item at any board meeting. So if after today, if the board feels like the, or a member of the board feels like there's a a need for an action item to look at, look at something that we're doing and look at it differently or make a different decision, then we can, that could be brought up at any board meeting. And those, of course, that agenda needs to be posted, you know, in accordance with open meeting law 24 hours in advance.
Okay.
Okay? So the first couple of things I want to do is just, I just want to show you some, some review. First of all, I want to just kind of review the Return to Learning Guide we have. Christine has made a condensed version of the Return to Learning Guide that all the front offices have at their disposal. And you'll remember that the first one, the actual official Return to Learning Guide is about 40, 40-some pages. This one, I believe, is six or something like that. This one's not printed out because it's a little longer. But just to give you an idea of the the information that's included within the Return to Learning Guide. You know, we've got health and safety measures. And that includes social distancing requirements at school. That includes guidance on on reducing group gatherings, making sure that we're limiting the opportunity for, for groups to gather in close contact. Of course, all these are based on the CDC guidelines. Then there's a section on screening for symptoms, school expectations. You know, at school, how we're going to go about screening kids when, when they come to school. And when we're going to go, guidelines on when to send a student to the nurse. And information on whether, if they have, if the, if a student has additional healthcare information on file, then that's something that needs to be considered as well. And then what to do when a student becomes sick at school. And we've had, we've had some practice at that now. So when I finish with this part, Kim Sweeney, our, our lead nurse, is going to give some examples of, just kind of give a report on what she's seeing and hearing from our health offices at the schools. But we, you know, we've had to send some students home. And in that situation, we, if it's a system, if it's a symptom or a series of symptoms that are consistent with COVID, we have to assume it's COVID until we can get some information otherwise. So that's, you know, we've had to do that. And as, as you know, we've had to turn two classes in the last week or so, two classrooms. We've had to transition to fully virtual because we've had to send three or more kids home within a, within a three-day period in that classroom, which is consistent with our, our plan.
But how great that you had all the procedures in place and you knew when to act and how to act quickly and it was all, you know?
This most recent one, I was on my way to the dentist and Luciano came in and gave me the information. I said, well, that's, hey, that's, you know, that's in keeping with our plan. So he said, yeah, that's exactly right. I said, all right, then let's, you know, pull the trigger and get, and start the communication process and, and get that moving. So the, the fact that the plan was in place, I think the plan, the fact that it's follows CDC guidelines, we got feedback from the health department. Our folks were very diligent in putting it together and being very clear and, and specific. All that front-end work has really made it to where the, the decision-making on the back end is, is all, all in place. So that's, that's been good. So here, the, the next section is how we go about contacting parents, who will contact parents. And then cleaning and reporting to the health department. So all these things are laid out for our, our school personnel in a condensed format. So they don't have to go through the table of contents and look through a 40 to 45-page document. They can use this as a, as a very quick reference. Information for parents, you know, parents call. It's really helpful for our front office staff to have the guidance for parents when they call. Parent calls and maybe says, my, you know, my, my child has these symptoms. Well, then the, the front office staff can tell the parent, okay, well, then here's what, here's what you need to do. You know, you need to keep your child home. And the parents, we're hearing from principals, the parents have been really good about, if the kids are not feeling well, about not sending them to school.
Great, good.
So the, their responsibilities, parents, by all indications, are taking their responsibilities very seriously. This next section, these are things that we're seeing right now. Okay, we knew that this was going to come into play. We knew that we would hit cold season and flu season and that kids would display symptoms that could be consistent with COVID, but they're not cold or flu. And that's, that's where we've been this last week with, with the classes where we've had to send multiple kids home. We have not received information about positive COVID tests. However, we cannot force a parent to have their child tested.
I was asked that question. Could we, are we forcing the parents to have their children tested?
No, we can't. And even if there were to become a a development where we could have potentially tests available at school, we would still want to get consent.
Consent, okay. Because allergy season is
Allergies.
You know, with the runny nose and
Yeah, the wind that blew this week. Who knows how that's going to impact us? So after the parent expectations, we've got student expectations. And of course, our, our teachers are experts at guiding our kids through these expectations, making sure that they're washing their hands multiple times a day, making sure that we have hand sanitizer on hand. We've modified student belongings this year. We're not sharing materials in class where each student is to have their own materials. The old days with the table, which hopefully we can have again, you know, the table with this set of shared supplies in the middle of the table. Can't do that anymore. A piece about cloth face coverings, which of course our board passed policy to, to allow our schools to require the cloth face coverings. And then there's a section on cleaning procedures, on cleaning our classrooms, cleaning bathrooms, cleaning common areas, it defines common areas. So this has been a, a very good resource. And I want to give Christine, again, kudos. She, you know, she's the one who did the lion's share of the work to take the big initial draft that was about 60-some pages, I think, and get it down into a couple of different target audiences, draft for target audiences that were both smaller than that. And then to be able to condense it further to a really quick, a good, quick reference guide for the folks at the schools has been, was really helpful. We've got a lot of good feedback from that.
Oh, where's ours?
You see there's a section on classroom setup, on personal belongings, to be, you know, we're not bringing show-and-tell items and things like that. How we're going to manage lunch. And of course, there's some variety within schools because schools are set up differently, so.
Right.
But basic guidelines for lunch, for recess, for pickup and drop-off. And then, of course, we'll hear more about, about the health office from Kim Sweeney here in a few minutes about how that's going and what we're seeing and kind of what the projections are. But each school has an area to isolate kids if they are sent to the office with symptoms. So that we make sure that we're not co-mingling healthy kids with potentially sick kids in the, in the health office. We're trying to limit visits to the office and Kim can speak more about that if she thinks, if that's relevant, about trying to work with teachers on knowing what can kind of be managed in the classroom and what, what should be, what kind of things should be sent to the office. And then there's a section in here on transportation. We've had, you know, believe it or not, we had, right off the bat, we had some questions about transportation. We had a kid who showed up at the bus stop, had the runny nose and the cough. Parents weren't there. Well, we had this guide, so, you know, we, everybody knew that we go ahead and transport the student to school, escort that student to the nurse's office, call the parents and go from there. So these, that was, that was used, I think, within the first couple of days of, of the hybrid model. Again, cleaning, cleaning procedures on the buses and then grab and go. And then how we respond to a confirmed case of COVID-19. And this is what I copied for, for the board when we transferred that first class at McGraw School to, to fully remote. This is our, this is our scenario. And this is what we, this is what we follow for symptomatic cases. So I really just wanted to, this is all information that the board has seen in, in one form or another. I wanted to showcase that it's, it's been further condensed into a really, a real good, quick reference guide for our, for our office staff.
Are there enough copies to go around on that or?
It's electronic.
Oh, it is electronic, okay. Are there paper copies available hard, if somebody were to want a hard copy?
Any school could make copies.
Okay, okay.
They chose you. And then the second thing I want to show you, this is in your packet, is the District One dashboard. You know, the board made the decision early on that we were going to monitor the dashboard that the Arizona Department of Health Services maintains. But we, we thought it was important to put together a site that was a quick reference site for lots of different information. And again, Christine's been doing a great job of keeping this up to date. So this dashboard is updated regularly, more than weekly. Daily if necessary.
And it's bilingual, correct?
And it's bilingual.
This is good. I like what is said in this.
That it is, but it is just for our staff.
Yeah, the, the idea of this one is for, internal for our faculty and staff.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the, the parent updates are bilingual.
I know what those things you put on Facebook, okay.
So if you look at the second page.
So this is internal, this is internal.
This is, yeah, the, the idea of this is that for us to keep our faculty and staff
Good.
updated on what's going on in our district as well as our county. So the next page, you can see there's a, and here, here's one of the nice things about this, this whole document. You've got our local district-level data. Okay, so you can see by week how many cases, whether they were symptomatic or not, and, and at what schools. And then next door to that, on the right-hand side, you have county-level data. And then that blue button right there at the top is, will click and take you to the ADHS link for their live data. There were some questions about the report that came out, I think in the news, I don't know, last night, or about the changes in the benchmarks. And not the benchmarks, they didn't change the benchmarks, but they changed, Department of Health changed the guidance. Okay? So we knew that was coming. We had, had a meeting with members of the County Health Department last week. We knew it was coming. And we were able to, right here on the right-hand side, the ADHS benchmark, we were able to get that information out to all of our folks on Friday, based on the information that we had, had received, even though the the actual written version of the guidance, I think, didn't come out maybe till Monday. Something, something like that. So one thing you can see on the guidance and Ryan and our guest from, from the County Health District are going to, are going to speak to this a little more. But what's been added to this school dashboard is this button right here, this box. And it says recommended delivery model. So you can see that data for Yuma County shows that our recommended delivery model right now, based on ADHS guidelines, is hybrid. And their recommendation is, the, the change in their recommendation was that a district, their recommendation is that a district consider changing their delivery system when all three of the indicators have moved to a different zone. So right now, we're in hybrid, we're in the yellow. So their, their guidance is we should consider, along with our county health officials, if all three indicators move into the red or the substantial spread, we should consider a fully remote option. We also, they're also, their guidance is not to consider a traditional option until the, until the, all three indicators are in the green. I think what this does, one thing it does is it aligns the school recommendations or the school guidance with the business guidance. But I think what it also does is it helps ensure that, and I've talked about this, I've used this term quite a few times with the board, this idea of continuity, continuity of the structure, a continuity of program. It, it gives good guidance and it, I think, reduces the temptation to change, to change programming or change delivery prematurely in an area so that, so that you don't, you're not going back and forth and pivoting back and forth into different models. So the, hopefully we'll get some, we'll get some more information from, from Ryan and the folks from County Health on that as well. You can see here COVID-19 testing resources. This is all information that's available locally. And Christine does a good job of staying up on this. And each one of these areas or any area where there is a link to a, to an external site that gives more information, it's right available right there for employees to, to click on. If you want to know where to get a flu shot, you can click on that button there, that purple one, or it'll give you all the places to get a flu shot. Again, here's additional data. And I'm going to show you some data a little later that we got just, just this week. That I'm sure when I share with Christine, she'll get that back on that, get that up here too. And so you can see that this is just, we want our employees to have as much information as they can. We want them to know not only what the county data says, but also what are, what's going on with our district. We want them to see our, those numbers as well. Want to be transparent. And we want to give them, I think, a larger context for the information that's out there so that they can see, so that they can have the information that we have that's going to guide our decision-making when we're, when we're doing, when we're making our decisions. So you can see on that bottom page, there's links to that staff guide, the student guide. There's a link to the Employee Assistance Program. That's something that's part of our, our health insurance program for, you know, for mental health. So there's a link right there. If, if employees are experiencing anxiety or, or other, other problems related to mental health, there's a link to, to that program. And just, this is just a wealth of information in one really compact document for our, our employees. So Kim Sweeney, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
We can see your picture here with the pink mask.
Yeah, I know. The question is, am I smiling or not?
I see in your eyes that you're smiling.
That's right.
So I was just hoping, Kim, that you could give our, our board members just a feel for how things are going at the, at the health offices, at the school, kind of what we're seeing, what the trends are, what your perception of the responses of our, of our response at the school level has been and so on.
I would love to do that. Good afternoon, everybody. I can only say how wonderful the Return to Learning Guide has been for all of us. I mean, it's full of everybody in line. We do a lot of checks and balances of if we're working or if we're doing something that didn't work. And every single time I use it, it works. And so it has been a tool that I know that I have appreciated. And we spent a lot of time this summer, but it was well worth it. What did happen, though, with the Return to Learning Guide, it got a little complicated for my health assistants, some of my RNs, even the building principals, because there were so many pages to flip through and try to figure out. So Luciano and I worked on, for the building principals, what do they need to do? We found with families also, all they really wanted to know was, what do I need to do? And how soon can my child get back to school? So Luciano worked on the administration one for principals. So they, it's a guide, it's duplicate of what our Return to Learning document is. So the principals have it at hand, they know exactly what needs to be done. The same thing with our health office, but we added a page of what do the parents need to do? It's all the same, but it's just, you know, easier to read and the parents grab that. For instance, I was at one of the schools and the, the two boys had symptoms. And the, you know, the father was getting really upset, what do you mean? And it, and we just said, here, here's a guide, this is what you need to do. And he says, oh, okay. And it just really simplified everything. It kept that, I don't want to say anger, but the frustration, a lot counts. What we're finding in the health offices right now is, of course, the flu and the allergy season, there, and, you know, all that is coming to play. We have to assume across the board that those are symptoms for COVID until it's either resolved with a doctor's, you know, information or they get tested for COVID. The things that we wrote into our Return to Learning, you know, I thought, okay, this is pretty simple. We can just go the 14 days if they, you know, or the 10 days with symptoms. But some of the scenarios we're finding out through the public health department is that some of our students can be easily kept home for up to 24 days or longer. If you have a mother that cannot quarantine, every single day for that whole household is considered, each day is another 14 days, you know? So by the time the mother is finished and she can't isolate, by the end of the 14 days, the kids have to go for another 10 days. And then if a sibling or something, it could keep going on and on. You know, some of the things that we just don't think about, but you learn on the go with all these things. One of the things Public Health Department wanted us to do was that if a student is symptomatic in one of our schools, then we need to get all the rest of the siblings in our district to go home all at the same time and isolate. Which, you know, so I've been very proud of my staff and the teacher, actually, everybody in the district. They've been amazing. But we contact each other. The Public Health Department said we did not need to go as far as contacting the high school because it's an outside district. So we've been working diligently. I have a forum that I constantly watch. And as far as I can determine, the positive cases are coming from outside of the community, in the home, they have it. We're not seeing any cases that started at school, like another student contacting COVID through a sick student. Our cleaning is impeccable. The distancing, I'm sure, has helped, the mask-wearing. Here at Castle Dome, announcements go on all day. So we are doing the best we can. I'm not seeing a lot of visits in the schools, but when they do, they seem to come in multiples. But we had another classroom at the one school that had already closed down a classroom and no more, no more ill kids as of today. I talked to the health aides, so we're all doing that. The rules, the regulations, even the procedures can change on a dime. Every day, I'm hearing something from someone or the health department, oh, you have to do it this way. So Luciano and I have been trying to update as we hear it. And most of what we've written still follows the CDC protocol, it's just tweaking it. So we really work hard to keep our parents and our staff updated on that. So what I'm seeing, most students that go home are symptomatic of something. And they meet the criteria that we set forth in the Return to Learning Guide. We also are called by parents if someone has been identified as positive in the home and the child is considered a close contact or the siblings are. So we have to send those particular students home. And like we just did this past week, if we have three or more cases of symptoms or one positive and several symptoms, we, you know, have to do what we need to do by closing it down. But for the most part, I think that it's working. We're, we're safe, we're showing to parents and staff that we're open about what's going on in our schools. Let's see here. I continue to have frequent contact, sometimes more than that, with the public health nurses. They give us updates. I go over all the contacts, anybody I've heard. And lately, they want us to also try to find out where they've gotten the test. And sometimes we can find that out, sometimes not. It looked like a couple of weeks ago, it was pretty high cases. Maybe it's coming down, we can only hope. Maybe, maybe the wind blew it away or something. But we're just trying to work as a team in the district. The staff are in most of the health offices, I think all of them. The staff just either call the health office or they radio them. They've been exceptional. They really have been keeping down the number of visits in the health room, which really helps us to determine who is really sick, who do we need to isolate and how do we go forward? The kids that have their regular routine treatments, they get in, they get out. They're wonderful. And we even had, I had one incident where, you know, the one child said, oh, I, I was positive for COVID. Well, of course we get the child right to the room, right? And so I'm like, okay, let's just call the mother. Let's see what happened. And the child had already been out for 14 days, was resolved. And I, I apologized to him, but he said, I understand. I mean, these children are amazing. And it just, it just warms your heart. So we're, I think we're all working on the same page. The Return to Learning Guide has really been a major tool. And I can cut and paste it if there's a question and it goes on and it answers every question. So we did it. I feel like we were, this is a great district because we planned ahead. So do you have any questions at all that I can answer for you?
Looks like you're going to get off the hook.
Oh, there we go. Well, thank you. Thank you for that opportunity to talk. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for reporting.
I, I appreciate that the parents are getting support, you know? And, uh, like you said, that father was upset and yet she was able to help them and, because they don't know what to do next, you know? So that's good that we're providing that.
Right. And I think there's a high level of anxiety initially. So if you can kind of just show them, we're here, you know, here's the, here's the procedures or the protocols and that, that can give everybody, that way everybody's, you know, reading off the same sheet of music, so to speak.
Right.
I see that, uh, Ryan is here. Suzie, do, do you guys mind if we flip flop the, um, agenda a little bit? I want to honor the time of the folks from the, uh, health department. So, um, I'm going to stop sharing and then I'm going to reshare. How's that for bold? So Ryan, are you, there's Ryan. And Ryan, welcome and thank you. I wonder if you'd like to introduce the folks who are here with you? And then, um, we talked a little bit about the information that we were hoping to glean from, uh, from your team and that information about the new guidelines as well as, um, the new disaggregation of information that we got as, uh, super tenants around the county about, uh, the testing by zip code. And then hopefully some, just some insight from your, from your office.
Sure. So first off, uh, good afternoon to everybody. Thanks for having us on here. Uh, my name is Ryan Butcher. I am the Communications and Community Engagement Coordinator here at the Yumi County Health District. Um, with me, sorry, we're having some technical difficulty. So I think everybody's coming into my room.
He's on his way as well.
Okay. Um, I'll go ahead and let, um, Karina introduce herself.
Hi, my name is Karina Savala. Um, I'm the nursing supervisor here at the health department. Been here for about 12 years. In my position, I've only been here for five months.
And then joining us here shortly will be, uh, Benito Lopez, who is our epidemiologist. So, um, he is coming in at the moment. Let me go grab him a chair as he introduces himself.
Hello. Uh, my name is Benito Lopez. I'm the epidemiologist for the County Health Services District. Thank you for having us.
I didn't know what it was.
Gotta love these COVID times. Never fails, right? Got you in there. All right.
So Ryan, we got new, uh, guidance from the, uh, department. And, uh, I wonder if you want to give us a little insight as to, uh, what might've been behind there from, from your perspective? And then, um, kind of what you're seeing as far as trends and, and developments, not, not only in the area of, uh, of cases, but also, um, maybe areas around testing and, and tracing and maybe the, maybe some information on the wastewater monitoring.
So which new guidance are you referring to, Jamie?
The new guidance that they released last week.
Okay, sure. The returning to in-school instruction?
Yes.
Absolutely. So let me just bring up the dashboard for my reference. So overall, there weren't a whole lot of changes. I think the, the major changes there have to do with when we're going to go back from a hybrid model, back into a virtual learning model. Um, the way that they decided to do that was once we have one benchmark or a combination of benchmarks in the substantial category, meaning above 10% for two consecutive weeks, that would warrant schools starting to have those conversations with the health district about, um, when they would go back to a virtual learning model. Um, but not until all three benchmarks are in substantial would ADH, ADHS really, um, push to go back to a virtual model. So they, they kind of have a, you know, left a little leniency there and, and wanted, uh, to give the schools the ability to make those decisions. Um, as you can see, as, uh, Jamie brought up, the benchmark for percent positivity and the cases per 100,000 is, you know, dancing right along that 10% threshold. So tomorrow's number for percent positivity looks like it's going to be just under 10%. Um, but there's no way to really forecast what that cases per 100,000 is. So we'll just have to kind of wait. Um, but even if one of those gets into substantial for tomorrow's numbers, we would have to see two weeks of that before we would start considering going back to a virtual model.
And Ryan, I'm going to put up the new data we got this week from your office. Which is information by zip code and by age. And I don't know if you've seen the spreadsheet or not, but I will. Do you guys see that?
I can't, no.
So this, this one is not by, oh, this one is not by age. It's just by zip code.
Right. And I, I've got, there's, there's two on this particular. There's the age.
There's the age. Correct.
Here's the zip code. And so what we're seeing, District One zip codes start, I believe, right here at eight, five, three, six, four and go down, uh, from there. So what we gathered from this was there's still significant spread in eight, five, three, five, oh, eight, five, three, four, nine, especially, and then eight, five, three, three, six, which are in the southern part of the county predominantly. So th- does this seem consistent with what you're, what, what you're, um, experiencing? And I think, I guess my question would be, is this good? Good information for us to consider and make sure that we disseminate to our, our staff? Because our staff is watching the county numbers and, uh, they're, you know, they're getting a little nervous at times.
Yeah, that, this is Benito. Uh, yes, that is, that is, uh, correct. That is consistent with the numbers that we have. And those are, uh, the overall, the overall cases. Not specifically age groups, but, uh, I mean, uh, school age groups. But it's, it's, uh, you're, you're correct. That is, that is a steady, uh, increase in, in those, uh, zip codes. And it was what we see on the, on the cases being reported to us every day.
Now just something else to, just to kind of consider, I guess. Um, you know, zip, doing the cases by zip code can, can give you some great information. Um, it also can be misleading at times. Depending on, you know, some of those, you can see for district, or for eight, five, three, six, four, and some of those larger areas, those tend to be a little bit more accurate, I guess. You know, when you get into those smaller communities like Dateland or Walton, where maybe you don't have as much testing going on, you may only have 10 tests in a week and if none of those come back positive, that's a 50% positivity rate. Whereas the following week, maybe you don't have any tests. So that's zero. So, you know, it, it's just knowing the data there. The good news is with the District One, a lot of those fall in those larger, um, areas. So you can get a, a better, I guess, uh, you know, an accurate, um, talent as to what the, those positivity rates can be. Another thing to kind of keep in mind is those zip codes are really only relevant if we're staying in those zip codes. Um, when we start moving around and, and, you know, we might say eight, five, three, six, four, or maybe it's higher. But if we have people from the eight, five, three, six, four zip code going into Somerson's zip code or those other areas, you know, um, or if you're going to Walmart, everybody goes to Walmart, you know, you're going to have that, that spread. And that's where you literally, you know, that's where you see that community spread. So although it is higher in some areas, um, for, for more reasons, those are just some other things to kind of consider.
Yeah. Along that line, we had a principal yesterday who said, uh, you know, my students live in eight, five, three, six, four, but grandma lives in eight, five, three, five, oh. And they, they spend a lot of time at grandma's house or, um, so the, yeah, we have not only, not only mobility, but, but we, yeah, we have, you know, obviously extended family that may live in some of those other areas where, uh, people are going to visit.
That's a good example.
So the other information we have and we, you know, we hear this, we, from a lot of people, this is kind of part of the criticism we hear or I guess some of the feedback we get is that, uh, not as many kids get, get the, the COVID-19 and that when they do, it's not as hard on them. Um, and this data here that was shared by your office, um, you know, kind of bears that out. That, you know, within each age group, over the course of about a six-week period, not a lot of kids have been, have had it. Um, but in our meetings with the hospital, the information we got was as many as 40% of the kids who actually have it, uh, can be asymptomatic and they still carry, they can still carry the same viral load. That might be a question for Benito.
So, so, so what happened is those numbers that you have there that we provide you, those are all, uh, confirmed cases. And those are the ones that we receive and we check every, every, uh, then you see those as by, by week difference, you know? Then, then we see how many cases in those age groups, uh, have been, uh, reported to us. So, and then that can be correct, you know, but the highest, the highest numbers that we have is in, and the group from 20 to 20 to 44, actually 20 to 24, 25. So, um, I don't, I don't know exactly, uh, what is the, you know, if they test them and test negative, we don't have that information. So negatives are not reportable, even though they may have symptoms, or they may consider them clinically, uh, uh, with the possibility for COVID. And this negative, we don't have that information. So I don't know which, what would the best way, uh, to explain that to you? Uh, because that is, uh, only confirmed cases. We don't, we don't need any negatives.
So we don't really know what the percentage of positivity would be with this data?
Actually, no, because we don't know how many kids were tested until, unless we go specifically and look for that, that information. And, um, it's, um, we can see, we can pull that information, but it's, it is not simple because we have to go through all the testing and through all the facilities and see uh, those age group and how many of those kids were tested and how many are the positive rate with a specific age group. We can try to, uh, work with the state and see if there is any, um, process for that. So the specific percentage of the kids being tested against the, the percentage of the, I mean, the, the number of kids being tested is against the, the percentage of the positivity. So we can, we can exactly have the, the percentage of positivity rate.
Okay. Do you have a feel for, uh, it seems that one of the things that we're running into is a student will have symptoms, but we can't, um, all we can do is encourage the parent to have the child tested. Do you have any kind of feel for the extent to which parents are getting kids tested when they have symptoms or whether they're just, um, or whether they're being a little more cautious and just keeping them at home?
We've noticed lately, they've been refusing to test their children, um, and they're just leaving them at home.
Okay. That's the experience we have locally. I mean, our, our small sample size is that when we've sent students home, uh, we, we've recommended testing, but, uh, but the, most of the parents have, have chosen, uh, not to go through with the testing.
And that's in a, in a lot of districts.
Yeah. Um, does any members of the board have any questions for the team from County Health?
Jamie, did you want to ask about, did you want to ask about testing for students?
Yeah, that's what I was going to go next. Yep. So, um, what's on the horizon as far as testing? We know, you know, we hear, we hear that there's, um, maybe the federal government has made a number of tests, you know, millions of tests available to Arizona, that the county could get some. Potentially there could be an opportunity for testing at school sites. Um, what, what, what are we looking at right now as far as developments in that area?
So that's definitely something that's been discussed. I don't know that there's any, um, there's been any updates on that. Alls I know is we've been in discussions with the state health department. Um, they're really hoping that they will be able to, um, offer rapid tests to the schools directly. Um, so that they can do the rapid tests onsite. One of the benefits of, you know, depending, there's, you know, the, when we first got some of the rapid tests, and I'll let Karina kind of jump in, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, Karina, but some of the first rapid tests that we got took about, they could do a, a test about every 20 minutes. Um, so about three tests an hour on, on that one machine. Um, you know, mo- most recently we've gotten some other tests and they've come out with some other rapid tests that, um, forgive my analogy here, but is, is similar to a pregnancy test in that you would do a swab up the nose, put it in this package, sealed it, and within 15 minutes, you would have your results there. Um, and the good thing about that is that required the same amount of, you wouldn't have to, on the same amount of PPE for that test?
Um, yes, we'll, we'll use the same PPE. Um, the good thing about this, um, test is that as long as you're properly trained, pretty much anyone could do it.
Okay. So there's no specialized training. Did, uh, one of our, one of our nurse, nurse's office personnel could, could administer the test?
Would we have to get permission, parental permission before we test?
We would need parental permission. We could possibly get that over the phone.
Yeah.
Yeah. Permission and then the, and then the school districts would need to apply for a CLIA waiver as well.
Okay. What kind of waiver? What kind of waiver, Ryan?
Uh, a CLIA waiver.
What?
CLIA. It's C-L-I.
C-L.
So there's, uh, you know, and, and should that testing get to that point where they plan to, uh, distribute out to the schools? That's most definitely something that the state would pass along to us and we would be in communication with the districts about how to go about obtaining that waiver. Um, so we would most definitely be in, in talks with you about that when it gets to that point. Um, so yeah, most definitely. And, and if that happens, I mean, with a, you know, District One already having a strong mitigation plan and doing, uh, you know, as, as good a job as you guys have done, being able to test onsite and immediately eliminate, you know, that notion of whether that kid, if they're symptomatic and you, you're able to give them that test right then and there and it comes back negative, uh, you know, that's two days at home versus 14 days at home. Same, same thing goes for staff. Um, you know, it's no secret that staff have still came, you know, still go to work, um, being symptomatic. Um, you know, there's real world problems. They may not have PTO. They may, you know, money may be an issue. Nobody wants the kids for whatever reason, um, you know, we still have staff that show up, maybe symptomatic. Nobody wants the kids, for whatever reason, you know, we still have staff that show up maybe symptomatic. But if they know that they can get a rapid test onsite, and, you know, it's two days at home versus fourteen days, there may be more forthcoming, which would also help mitigate that spread. So that would be, you know, if that, if that pushes through and that happens, that would be something that would, that would be a big win in our book, and something that would definitely help mitigate that spread on campuses.
And this test is a nasal swab. So it's pretty, pretty painful, less, not very painful.
So the comparison between this one, this isn't the one that goes up into your brain. It still goes through your nose, but not through the brain. This one only goes to the top of the, of the nose, right where your eyes start to water test a little bit, and then you do a slight little twist, and then that's it. And like Karina was saying, once instructed on how to do that, we, you know, anybody could pretty much do it. So, which is another, you know, big factor. We understand not every school's gonna have a nurse onsite, so that's definitely plays a part as well.
And could you go over quickly, what are the PPE requirements for someone who's administering that test? Are they, they're less than or same as for a regular healthcare person?
You would wear your N-95, either goggles or face shield, and your gown and gloves.
So that's, that's all, that's all the PPE that we have, that we have as standard stock right now in our health offices. Question?
What was that waiver? I didn't understand what exactly that waiver is.
CLIA, C-L-I-A. It's the, the clinical, yeah, do you bring it up, go ahead? The Clinical Laboratory Improvement Amendment. It's a waiver for, allows facilities primarily, laboratories to legally examine a person. And so that's what people would need. So we would apply for that, and the Health Department would help facilitate our application on that?
To some extent, yeah. There, what I understand, they're talking about how they can maybe make that a little bit more painless. So whether that be, you know, creating some type of link for schools, or something to that effect. But yes, definitely would be able to offer some guidance on that, for sure.
Is that waiver by site or by person? You'd have to have a waiver for each site, or a waiver for each person?
That's a good question, and I don't know that I know the answer to that. I wanna say site, but I don't know site would be district, or if it would be each school within that district. So let me, that's a good question. Let me get, let me follow up on that, and then I can email that answer back to Superintendent Sheldon.
Okay, thank you.
Great question. Okay, that, that could be a game changer if something like that were to happen.
It really would.
Is there any cost attached to obtaining that waiver?
I didn't sound like it.
I don't think so. And if, that, that cost would be covered through our Parents Act money as well.
Okay, I was just curious.
I have wastewater monitoring on here, but I was in a meeting yesterday afternoon, late yesterday afternoon, and I've got quite a bit of information on that, so I can share that with the board in our, we can report. I put tracing on here, you know, we hear about, a lot about that, testing and tracing, testing and tracing. What do we have right now in Yuma County as far as tracing? And that's one thing that we really don't have at our schools as far as personnel to, to really track down. We can track down, we can contact, we can let people know if they are in contact, but then following up and is, you know, requires a lot of time, it's pretty time-intensive.
I'll, I'll let Karina address that one.
So we have the state right now helping us with most of our contact tracing. They'll take cases and they'll get ahold of them, interview them, gather any contacts, household contacts. And then there's another group that calls or texts or emails those household contacts either daily, every other day, just depending on what that contact will like. Here at the Health Department, what we do, we focus more on school-aged children. So I have my nurses here, trying to get ahold of schools to see who are out, who needs follow-up. And then we do the same thing, we call the household, make, we always ask them to see if, if the school is aware that they tested positive. And then we always ask to see if there's other students or their siblings in other schools, so they could, you know, be either pulled out or tested. It's, it's really time-consuming, like you said, it's really time-consuming. And sometimes it's like a never-ending battle, because we have parents that refuse to answer the phone. We have parents that refuse to let us know what school their child attends, or where they work. But we do the best that we can.
Any other questions for the folks from our County Health District?
Just thank you so much for your time. It's nice to have that.
Well, I want to tell you, Ryan, I really appreciate the fact that anytime I need to, I can text you, and you'll get back to me, and we can get on the phone together. And the, the availability and responsiveness from your office to my office has been really greatly appreciated. And we really appreciate the fact that you're able to come on today and share us some, share some information with us, answer some questions, and if any other questions come up, just like you're gonna research that CLIA waiver, if any other questions come up, we can hop on the phone later in the week and talk about it.
Excuse me, Jamie, you have on here wastewater monitoring?
Yes, I had a meeting about that yesterday afternoon. I can brief, I can brief the board on that. In fact, I probably have gotten information probably since, since Ryan has. So I would imagine, so.
Thank you very much, Ryan.
Thank you very much.
You got it. Thank you so much for having us here today. And, you know, anytime you guys are needing anything, feel free to reach out. It's nice to find, I spoke to Luciano probably twenty times, and it's finally nice to, to put some faces to some names. So, you know, we're here to help. Karina and Benito have done a fantastic job, and, you know, they do a lot of the, the hard work, and then I get to steal all the credit. So, you know, it's, it's good to have them on board. And if you guys have any other problems, questions, anything that we can help facilitate, that is what we are here for. So I want to commend you guys on doing such a fantastic job with your mitigation. And, you know, we haven't had any issues with, with District One, with any of the schools or anything as far as the staff. You guys have been fantastic. So I want to thank you guys for, for doing, you know, going above and beyond what you're expecting, and it's, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan, thank you all.
All right, thank you guys.
Yes, thank you all.
Okay, backtrack to Dr. Alka. We have updated numbers on the learning tracks, and we have a little bit of a comparison. So I'll turn it over to you. I'll share my screen with the numbers. And then some of the talking points are there on the agenda. This is the second, this is the parent choices section.
Thank you so much. I, no, last, at our last board meeting, we looked at our numbers and percentages of students in each of our learning tracks that we offer. And we had that data from October ninth was the date that we pulled that information. We have updated data from October twenty-sixth. And we've had just a few minor changes. If you look at the percentage of students, and then in the bottom corner, there is the October ninth data as well, so you can kind of compare what we see. So what has happened in the last couple of weeks is we've had a little bit of a reduction in our two-day hybrid students. Looks like about two hundred students have moved from two-day hybrid to five-day. And then we've also had some students move into remote learning. About six students have moved into the remote learning model, totally remote. So a little bit of movement, not a lot, but, you know, I think people's needs change over time as their family situation changes. So it's not uncommon to see that. But I think this allows us to, for the most part, our parents have options. They have three different ways to choose what's best for their family. And so whether that is five days a week, whether it's two days a week, or whether it's staying remote, those are, you know, I think they have those, those options, and they, they choose those options based on what they feel is best for their children and their family. And so this is kind of something that we feel is almost like a survey of parents, because we continue to reach out to parents, they continue to reach out to the schools if they need a change. And our principals really do a good job of meeting with parents and trying to, you know, determine with them what the best, what the best track is for them. So.
Remind me again, Suzy, how long if they sign up for one track? What are we asking them to give that as far as timeframe before they switch?
We ask for a quarter. So we ask them to choose for the nine weeks. However, if there's an issue that comes up, if they've been looking for a job, and all of a sudden they get a job, and they can't do, you know, they need five days now instead of two days, all they need to do is call the school. Usually they meet with the principal and, you know, just get that taken care of. So we know that, that it's a constantly evolving situation for lots of families right now. And I would say just kind of looking at some, some benefits of our current hybrid model. I think one benefit is that we do have multiple choices for families. I think we are able to, because of the way that we have set this up, we are able to meet the CDC guidelines and keep, keep those, that social distancing in our schools. I think it also allows us to maximize the number of students that we can have at school for at least part of the time, and still keep with the CDC guidelines. I think it also helps us promote the continuity of the program, something that Jamie talks about quite a bit. But we've had a few situations in which we've had positive cases come about. But because of the two-day hybrid, or because the student was totally remote, it happened in a, in a timeframe where there were no close contacts, because the student is only in school two days a week, because they're two-day hybrid. And they, you know, show symptoms, for example, on Wednesday, and then they wouldn't be back in school until Monday. But because it has been five days already, those close contacts are not there. So it helps with ensuring that we're not, that we're, we're not closing down our classrooms all the time, because we have people there, the same people there every day. I think one of the things also that we, when we did our planning this summer, we planned for three potential models. We planned for a totally remote model, we planned for the two-day hybrid, and we planned for traditional, in which everyone's back normal. We really did not plan for a five-day hybrid option. And so that, that's something that, if that's something that we need to look at, then we need, we're going to need some time to plan for that. It's going to mean schedule changes, it's going to mean potentially changes with teachers, those kinds of things, to ensure that we have balanced classes throughout the district, those, those types of things. Because it'll change the numbers that we're looking at within our classrooms. It also most likely will mean that we will not be able to meet the CDC guidelines of the social distancing that's required. And I think that there are, it limits the parent choice to two, two options, either, you know, five-day in-person or totally remote. And I think that can be difficult as well. I think it could lead some of our parents who are in, in our two-day hybrid programs to go back to totally remote, because they may not be comfortable with that, that five-day option alone in-person.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
So the five-day hybrid model, I guess, what I was, because I know they go two days, and then they can go three, but they're learning remotely in, on campus. Is that, so when we say five days, is that the same?
I think one of the things that we have been, what I understood that we wanted to kind of talk through was a five-day hybrid model in which students would either choose five days in the classroom or hybrid as an option. So kind of a totally separate learning model, similar to what some of our other local districts are doing, where there are basically two options. You're either in the classroom five days a week, or you're learning remotely five days a week.
Hybrid to me was the half and half.
Oh, I see.
I think, though, maybe to clarify, that the students that are reflected in this data, let's say five-day, those are the kids who, who, under the, predicated by the governor's executive order, need a place to go. So they're in the class two days a week, in, in, with direct instruction. And then those other three, they are. And, and depending on the numbers, depending on, there are schools where those kids can still be in the classroom, because the numbers are still small enough for distancing. One thing the schools are really doing, especially the ones that have a lot of kids who are there five days, they're really being equitable about making sure the kids with the highest needs are getting the best and most services, and making sure that it's not the same, if they have a, an overflow area, making sure that it's not the same kids in the overflow area every time that they're, that they're rotating. And they've been really cognizant and conscious of that. So, yeah, so that, that's the design of the five-day. But, but the principals have been, and the teachers have been really good about trying to get those five-day kids some enhanced instruction while they're there as well. And that might be part of why we're seeing some of the uptick. Is because that word gets out, you know.
I guess I'm confused, because I thought we were, we were looking at back-to-school, five days flat, that was it, in class. I thought that's what we, that's our goal even, is, no, I didn't, I don't, guess I didn't hear the five-day hybrid.
So hybrid to me just means that there, I, I, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that we can force parents to bring their students back to school.
No, I, 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 yeah, I guess that didn't count.
And so I think regardless of whether.
We would still have to give them a choice.
We would still have room for students, and that's, I think, where the hybrid comes in.
So that's the hybrid.
Or in class.
Okay, so it's just a matter of terminology, I guess, okay. We're all on the same page for what's gonna happen.
Something I think is important to point out, for the two-day, you need to add those two numbers together. So, you know, a total of about thirty-two and a half, you know, almost thirty-three percent of the parents have chosen the two-day option, twenty-five percent have chosen or need a five-day option, and then about forty-three or forty-two and a half have chosen fully remote. So currently, as Suzy said, we have three, we have three choices for parents. And we have a pretty sizable percentage of parents who have chosen, you know, each of the three.
Yeah, yeah, but we've got more at school.
But when you add them together, the two-day, the A and B, and then with the total remote, it's about half and half, right?
It's a little more at school.
Sixty, forty.
Which is good.
So I, I just think that's, to me, that validates, that, that is a validating factor that we, you know, we do have a considerable number of parents who, that, their choice is to have their child there two days a week.
I think the middle schools, because if they're in the middle. I think the middle schools, because if they're in the middle school, then they're in a room doing remote. So those, you know, those numbers are kind of high of remote learning because they can do the same thing at home, basically. And so um yeah, so I I was looking at the middle school numbers and they're, you know, most of them are in the fifties or more.
Now, clarify for me, with the middle schools, do they just stay in one room and the teachers move?
The teachers don't move.
Nobody moves.
In, we have a school where they move, where the teachers move, and then we have one where they stay in their homeroom. And the the teacher, um the teacher delivers a direct instruction via, u- usually via the um
Yeah, it's remote learning.
And so that they stay. So the principals, we've we've had some conversations with the middle school principals. And they're they're working right now on on ways to increase that engagement and increase that activity among middle school students.
That's the biggest concern I get is they want to go back to going between classrooms. That's, when when can we do that? When can we go between classrooms like we used to? But still stay social distance and wearing our masks, but yet we're able to be normal, so to say. That's the biggest question I get.
And that's from
In the middle school.
Karen, that's from parent, you're getting that?
But I know that
Yeah, not from the, you know, the parents, yeah. Well, they're getting it from their child, but they're asking.
Or some of the, yeah, there, some of the parents uh wanted to, because I was talking to Mr. Nunez. But, you know, you look at the numbers, they increase as the age increases. So we have to, and Mr. Nunez said, you know, I just told him, we have to do, the priority is safety above.
And that's, you just have, we just have to
You want all these fourteen, fifty, you know, running around, you know, it's, they're hard to control.
They're social creatures, and even more so at that age than
I'm glad we're doing that.
I did, I just have a quick question. On Woodard and Castle Dome, are those numbers for remote learning? Is it just because they've got larger numbers of students in the, because that's a big difference on
Look down below the percentages, that kind of gives you a better
Yeah, if you compare it to the percentages, so Woodard has a high percentage of remote. But, you know, the middle schools, as as Irene pointed out, um those schools have a higher percentage of students who are fully remote. Part of that might be too, that parents are a little more comfortable, maybe leaving and they can check in, check in on them. Parents know their kids, can make that decision.
They need to be monitored just
You still can't, yeah, oh mom, yeah, I'm doing the work as they're playing a video game on the side and mom and dad have no
Well, they're probably doing their work and doing something else, is what my grandson told me yesterday.
They're learning, they're at that age, they're learning to multitask.
Yeah, they are, they're multitasking.
Is that what they're calling it these days?
I think the other um, the other thing I would just say is that, and great questions, thank you all. And I know it can be confusing with all of the different um terminologies and and things that we're looking at. I think the other piece regarding both um you know, teachers moving from classroom to classroom, or students moving from classroom to classroom is um as much as possible, we've been trying to create kind of a bubble or a um a group of people that are seeing each other on a daily basis. And um so we're trying to keep that smaller rather than larger for for safety reasons. Um and so I think, again, the more we um, the more we open that up, the the more potential staffing issues that we might run into um down the road. The drawbacks of our our current model um it are, is that it's a challenging instructional environment to have both students in the classroom and virtual and trying to meet all of their needs. Meeting, trying to do that as a teacher in a classroom with all your students there is challenging. And then to have on top of that, um this this remote um piece is is even more challenging. I think also just that that there are, we're continually trying to work on this. And I think, I think um, you know, people are just starting to start, get their stride with the instruction part. And they're starting to think about how they can increase the collaboration with our students and increase their ability to to um engage in the learning and speak and talk. And, you know, that um socialization piece. And so um there are some tools that they're starting to to look at with that. That is true for our model now, but I think even if we went to a hybrid five-day in-person, I think it would still be, those would still be challenges and drawbacks that we would have um with our with our teachers. I think the other thing is um, one of the drawbacks that with our current model is that sometimes there's a capacity issue where um, you know, we we reached the point where we we have all the students we can have and still meet the so- social distancing requirements. And so um sometimes parents have to, you know, have to, if they don't absolutely need the five-day, they may have to stay on a two-day um in certain situations. But if they need it, our 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 principals really do everything they can to make sure that they are are making, are making room for them and meeting their needs there.
That would be hard, how do you draw the line? Where do you, oh, you can, but you can't and
And it's not, um I know, it's not at every campus, it's it's at a few um that they've had, that they've run into that situation, but um it's, it is difficult.
Jamie, can you just chime in really quickly and just, I want to echo what Suzie said. You know, having been the person that works very directly with Kim Sweeney when it comes to notifying parents, um if there is a positive case or symptomatic cases, I agree a hundred percent with Suzie that, you know, the ability to have these students in small cohort cohorts has been so helpful for us in following our mitigating I just think it's worth noting that.
Well, you can't monitor large, it's starting, it's, you know, hard enough to monitor the ones we do. Um and the classrooms are not set up at this point for, you know, large groups, they're all small. We need that, so, yeah.
Any other um questions or regarding this piece?
Well, thank you for the numbers, that is good.
I guess my my only question, Suzie, is um uh how are, how are our teachers handling, you know, as you pointed out, the challenging instructional environment? I I I know it's just eh another added stressor on them and, you know, how how are they hanging, how are they doing?
We've ta- we've talked a lot to our principals about really trying to take care of their teachers. We had a really amazing um blog that came out from George Kuros. We've been uh reading the innovator's mindset and innovate inside the box over the last couple of years. And um it was talking about giving people time, especially in this environment, to do what they need to do. And so um Randy asked this month if we could just give our teachers time during our district um Mondays to let them do what they need to do. Um whether it's team time, working with their teams and collaborating, whether it's grading, whether it's planning, what whatever it is that they need to do to help give them a little bit, some of that time back. So they can actually um take care of themselves. But we've, we've also been talking about self-care, we've been talking about how you can't be there for your students without taking care of yourself first. So we've really been trying to um to emphasize how important that is. And not to, not to expect too much from themselves, you know, to to push themselves up. So many teachers are perfectionists and they just want to do everything for their children. And um they um unfortunately sometimes put themselves at risk um in in wanting to do that. And so it's difficult.
The feel I get is that they're, they're working their tails off and they're trying and they're being innovative and they're, you know, giving it their all in general. But the frustration that I hear is you can't force somebody at home to log in. You can't force them to turn on their work, you can't force the parent to monitor them. The frustration is, what do we do about those kids who are not engaged still? And, you know, I, uh Jamie's got some facts for us, I think, for us to talk about, but that's a, you know, because they're
Yeah, Dwayne's got some information on that.
Well, I was at a school today and she told me they did a home visit and a kindergartner was home alone.
That's not good.
Yeah, well, they're they're acting on that, but, you know, a kindergartner, home alone, they have no wonder he's not turning his work. Yeah, so I mean, it's, it's hard. Oh, I commend them for all the, all that they've
It's uh they're, they are working
Do they have a timeout room somewhere? There are some places where you, you, there are rooms that you can just go in and just decompress for fifteen minutes.
Not a bad idea, little wellness room.
With that calm Uh but I, I I, that's always been one of my concerns too, is the kids that are just not they're not there, and I know that that is frustrating for our our teachers.
It's frustrating for me because in twenty years, these kids are the ones that are gonna be ready. We gotta get them engaged.
So Barbara, your question was actually an excellent segue to the next uh item.
That's perfect timing.
We surveyed uh our folks last week, our faculty and staff, all of our staff members. And so Luciano, as a result of that survey
Does everybody have the printout?
Oh, is that what this is?
He's got a color cop, a color printer in there.
I'm sorry, can I have like I'm sorry.
I need timeout. I I need a timeout room. Now, some of your big companies, they've, they've established areas of, you know, and it's, it's just, we've had it, I've done it. It's better than blowing their brains out.
It's funny, my my wife has downloaded the wellness app. And she uses it all the time and, and in the car and at home now, she on XM radio, she listens to the spa station. So I get in her car with her and I've got this like spa music going on, I'm like it just helps me relax, okay, you know.
I have the spa station, what a I do, because I just, I think it's, and I'm not, you know, stressed per se. That is, there's something about that that just
The music is nice.
Because when you do walk into a spa and that music, it's all of a sudden, it's like
Yeah, yeah. Well, she's discovered it here in the last few months.
Well, good for her.
A lot of people make fun of when they come into my office, I have that music playing too, but a day in HR, you need that calming music. All right, we ready?
We are ready.
Awesome. So we sent out a survey last week and great news, sixty-four percent of employees responded. So that's seven hundred and thirty-nine responses. On page three, you can see the breakdown of employees. I'll give you a moment to look at that. What is it that you notice in this slide here?
Over half of them are teachers.
Yes. We'd like to see that. What else do you notice?
And the next largest uh percentage is from the support staff.
Absolutely. This is a breakdown we like to see.
So uh I'm curious about uh administrators, did you get a hundred percent?
Close, close to a hundred percent.
I would want a hundred percent. But I know how they are.
I'll admit, I didn't fill it out.
I'll admit I didn't fill it out either. I always feel like, you know, um if I'm administering the survey, I don't want to skew any results by putting in my my own responses into. So anyways, overall, this is a good breakdown of our employee survey, good reflection of our our staff and our district. Then we wanted to see the work setting. So how many respondents were in different work settings? So you can see the majority here, elementary, from the elementary school setting, fifty-seven percent. Uh from the middle school, twenty-six point one percent. And then la- last place from departments across the district. So overall, a good reflection.
Uh Luciano, how many, how many employees do we have at the middle school?
Oh, that's a good question. I'll have to include that in the Friday report. Overall, we have eleven hundred and forty-eight active employees right now. So we had seven hundred and thirty-nine responses. But I can include that in the Friday report, Barbara.
Thank you.
Then I wanted to showcase um the participation by school, see how many surveys were turned in by school. So I'll give you a minute to to review this. And you can see, obviously, the larger schools had the most participation, which makes sense, they have more personnel. But overall, we felt like each school was well represented.
Yes, yeah.
Well represented.
Look at Raleigh, I mean Price.
I was surprised, I was at Pecan Grove today, that they're the smallest school now, the smallest number.
Uh K-five, yep, when you add on the, when you add on the special programs in the preschool.
Of course, they have a lot of other bodies running around, but yeah, but they had good, good percentage, forty.
Yeah, they have a lot of paraprofessionals on campus.
They're the, they're the veteran paraprofessionals.
And so here's the breakdown by department. Again, no surprise, transportation being our largest department. You have participation across all departments too, so.
Oh, yes, that's, that's good.
I'm surprised preschool, well, yeah.
Most of the preschool staff uh filled it out according to whatever site they're at. So this preschool is reflected of the preschool department across the street here. So then we get into the questions, how safe do you feel at work in this COVID-nineteen environment? And so I'll give you a minute to look at the percentages here. The blue represents very safe, the red represents safe, the orange represents somewhat safe, and the green represents not safe. So what I did was added up the blue and the red to see what is the percentage of safe in our district. Overall, these are all of our employees, and you can see that percentage there at fifty-three percent. We still have a large group of employees that feel somewhat safe. I mean, given that we're going through a pandemic, um that was part of our discussion cabinet that
It would be interesting to know, what would it take for them to feel somewhat safe or safe or very safe?
But you know
What are we, what are we missing that would make them
It might be just in general, just even going to the grocery store.
Not, not at the workplace, but just total.
Yeah, we we talked about the validity of having a kind of a middle-of-the-road answer like that. In a liker type scale. Um but then one of our principals yesterday made a pretty good point, it's like, well, you know, most of the day I feel pretty safe. But the other day I was out at uh, I was doing uh cap uh recess duty and like eight kids ran up to me. All of a sudden, I didn't feel very safe. They said, I think, I I would say, if I were filling this out, I would say somewhat safe, you know, because most of the time safe, but there are, there are times when I can't a hundred percent control my environment. And in those times, I I get a little, a little antsy, a little nervous.
But I look at that even myself, how do I feel? I'd, I would say
Teacher, teacher, or, you know, the principals too, you know.
So governing board, I want to stop here really quickly and just ask, I mean, it it, what were your expectations with a question like this with the employees of our district? Did you see a higher percentage with safe and very safe, or do you feel like this is reflective of what you would expect, given that we're going through a pandemic? Or do you feel like this is reflective of what you expect, given that we're going through a pandemic?
I think you hope that everybody feels safe when they come to work, so it's always, you know, a little disappointing to see, you know, there's even one person that doesn't feel safe. Whether that's realistic or not, but that's.
Yeah. I, I think, yeah, I, you know, obviously, everything we've seen, you've done, we have done so much to help. They feel safe, but there's things that go on in here that we can't control.
I think it's pretty reflective of, of the way the world is right now.
Right.
And it, it's, it just depends on where you're at, at the time when you were taking the survey, like Jamie said, that day. You know, eight children ran up to the principal and he could have felt very safe, but, I just, I think it's reflective of what's going on in the world. And I agree with Theresa, you would, you wanna be, Pollyanna and go, why don't they feel safe, you know, you should feel safe, we've done everything we can, what can we do, what can we do? We're not gonna be able to solve that.
Yeah, we want them to, we're doing, I think we're doing.
And the world just isn't letting us do that, so.
That's a good idea, what, what would make you feel safe?
We had, uh, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm making your presentation choppy, uh, but we had a really great conversation in, cabinet yesterday and the principals all said, you know, this, this is data we need as building principles so that we can take this to our, our employees, because we're the ones at each school that are gonna be able to really drill down and, and see what it is that's making people feel either somewhat safe or not safe. We can do, because they come to work at our school.
Right.
Could it be broken down by schools or has it been?
It is, yeah, it's. Luciano broke everything down.
That's great, you're right.
Gonna get their responses. They won't know who's who, but they'll know what their number is.
Yeah, that's, that's awesome, because they can do some changing if, if they know what's going on.
Yeah, that's why I had the question about what would, what do we need to do to make them feel safer than, the thirty-six percent, so that's, that's great.
So ye- yesterday in our cabinet discussion, Duane, uh, planted a, a thought in my mind, he goes, you know, um, what would this look like? Would the percentages be the same or would they change if we filtered out just to see teachers? So, he should have never told me that, because.
Just teachers.
So the same question, yeah, so the same question, we went and drilled down, um, and this is what it looks like, so the percentages do change slightly, um, you can see here the teacher percentage. And then you can compare that to the all-employee percentage for that response. You see, for not safe, it went up a little bit more when you just looked at teachers. For the somewhat safe, that climbed up a little bit more when you compare that to all employees. The same thing for, uh, very safe and safe, if you add those two together, that's forty-six point six percent for teachers. And when you look for all employees, it was a little higher than that. Yeah, so there was a, there was a dip there. So I did that for the rest of the question, just so we can compare teacher versus all employees. The next question was, have the district protocols and staff guides helped you to feel more confident returning to work? And you can see here, the largest response, it's forty-nine point five percent said yes, but there's still a large group that says somewhat at forty point three percent. And there's the ten percent group at no. This is all employees across our district, so we filtered to look at just teachers. Those percent changes, so somewhat goes up to forty-four percent. For those that said yes, goes down from forty-nine to forty-three. And then you can see here, the no increases to twelve point five percent. This is just looking at teachers compared to the red figures, which are reflective of all the employees.
I wonder if that percentage of employees who are not teachers, how many of them have really looked at the staff guides?
Yeah, that was my question too.
Because it, you know.
Well, we had a good conversation today, that of all the employee groups we have, the teacher's job has changed the most. So that's, that creates a level of anxiety, I think.
Custodians have, has. The nurses, yeah.
But I, I just wonder how many people have, just from some of the phone calls from the parents. Have you read this? And granted, it's large, you know, but have you even bothered to read the parent guide, you know, and, and, and there's no answer, so.
The next question was, do you feel you have the support and resources necessary to be successful in your position during this time? So you see a larger percentage here, fifty-five point two, but there's still a, a, a medium-sized group here that says somewhat at thirty-three point eight, and then there are eleven percent that says no. So if we wanna look at that just for teachers, you will see that forty-three point nine percent say yes, they feel like they have the resources and support. Um, forty point one feels somewhat and thirteen percent feels that they do not currently at the time.
Again, what would they, what is it they're lacking?
Well, the other thing too is, are these the same that would respond to that same question, whether we had a pandemic or not?
We, we talked about that, it would have been nice to be able to go back in time and do a baseline survey.
But you don't know that, I mean, these may be the same people, but no matter what you do, they're not, because there are those people in District One, I'm sure there are. It doesn't matter what you do.
We did have a suggestion, an area, um, for, for employees to complete. Um, and they certainly, um, expressed a lot of concerns, you know, with different areas that, that I can lift up at the end. But we didn't really see a lot of solutions, um, presented, um, what, things we can do in addition to what we're doing now. And I think one of the points brought up from the principal, um, at our, at our meeting yesterday was, I don't think they know what they need right now, because it's all brand new and they're trying to work through it day by day, so, um, we've had some interesting conversation about that.
So this could have just been also a vehicle with which to just vent their frustrations.
Yeah, it could have been, but I think it's a great, a great data set for our principals to really begin some really good conversations at their schools. And then for them to get that information and share with us. So that we can, you know, continue to move forward as a, as a district.
Yeah, because this isn't going away.
Not soon. Not this week.
The next question was, which of the following items would you first like to see before the district considers a transition to a five-day learning track for all students? And so it's a little difficult to see the results here, they're all bunched up, so we created a user-friendly way of seeing it. So here are the top five, um, items the employees want you to consider before transitioning to a five-day student learning track. Number one, no surprise, low Yuma County positive cases, and you can see the number of responses that selected that. And also employees can select more than one in this question too, so keep that in mind. The second thing here was, consider after cold and flu season passes. Um, number three, meeting state benchmarks to return to a traditional setting. Number four, do not consider until January of twenty twenty-one. Number five, consider after a vaccine is available. Yeah. So those are the top five. And then we had them give us feedback on the protocols that we have in place, how safe do each of these items make you feel at work? Um, so we wanna see orange, we wanna see green, um, orange is safe, green is very safe. Red is somewhat safe and then blue, we don't wanna see blue not safe. Um, so you have like the PPE provided to the employees, the increased cleaning, sanitization, the face covering, social distancing, the daily health screenings for employees. Every single item had the most rated at safe, second to that was somewhat safe. And then, just like the trend shows you here, in third place for each item was very safe, and then last place was not safe. Same thing, sanitizer stations, temperature stations, the rapid COVID testing, the workplace notices for COVID-nineteen. The return to learning guides as well. So I know that was a lot of information, a lot of percentages, but, you know, just like me said, I really feel like it's a good snapshot of how employees are feeling at the moment. Um, a good pulse for us to take back, um, sites specifically and have those conversations about what can we do to increase some of those percentages and make people feel more confident, um, and safe.
I think it's really a great idea to do that and courageous, but very necessary. I can probably validate them, a, a place that they could share their concerns. Give us a, like a, a, you know, the bottom line of what we can start with and then build from there. Uh, especially at the building level.
Well, and I think it's important we do this again. I don't know, maybe, not maybe before the holidays or before the, um, Christmas break, but.
Maybe when we come back.
Maybe afterwards, plus and then put in whatever the principals.
Whatever, there's some changes that need to be made.
It would be nice to see if those numbers, what they do, especially after the break.
I think, you know, the district level, it's been handled very well, but you're right, it's those, it's the building level and the building principal that really needs to take this and, run with it. I like what they gave us to think about for the five day, you know?
Right, this has been ver- this is very helpful, thank you so much, Luciano, I know you worked after, uh, Duane made the comment positive. That was a little bit more extra work, but it was, it was, yeah, been very illuminating here.
That's very telling, right?
Yes, yes.
I also wanna say that, as I was reflecting on the, the number of individuals that chose somewhat safe, um, or they chose somewhat in their responses, you know, I know there was a larger group than, that at least I anticipated. I went back and I thought about, in our district, we've been very fortunate that we've only had ten teachers exit the district either because of release of contract or a, um, leave of absence request. Uh, we have a lot of teachers that could be asking for accommodations, we have a lot of teachers that could be asking for leave of absence, but they are working through that. Um, and I think that there's still a level of uncertainty because of those individual conditions that they're bringing to their position, so, just being mindful of that as we kind of move forward in, in our brainstorming and planning.
So Luciano, we had ten teachers resign, is that what you said?
We had eight teachers ask for a release of contract. I've been, already been approved by the, at the October meeting, and then we had two that had asked for a leave of, of, of absence. And those are very low figures compared to some of my colleagues in other county, uh, in other districts.
How many are working from home? Are any working from home?
Yes, we have two working from home right now. So in our district, I mean, we're very fortunate that we have employees that are willing to come to work, even though they themselves could be asking for accommodations. You know, and caretaking situations, um, but they are, they're being dedicated and they're coming to work. So I think that's part of the reason why that somewhat group is still a little larger, because they are still concerned. They have some valid concerns that they're bringing from their own homes.
Well, and how, remind me again, how long has it been since we went to the hybrid?
October first.
October what?
Twenty-eight, uh, twenty-eight calendar days.
Okay, so we're still newbie right now, new territory.
Four weeks. We have twenty-six days left, school days left for, um.
Right, Christmas break.
So that's why maybe, maybe January into February, again, the numbers are, will be different.
And Luciano, remind me again, um, teacher-wise, how many long teacher subs do we have within the district?
We're down to one. One vacancy in our district.
Outstanding.
That's even with the new, uh, release of the contract requests that were approved in October, our principals have been working very hard and they have filled most of those vacancies.
Yeah, we're in a great place for staffing. Okay, our last topic is Mr. Shepherd, our last presenter. I'm sure he can move through his, uh, information with due alacrity.
I will try.
Quickly.
So our, our, the last area that we're going to discuss is about student engagement, we'll look at three different areas of engagement. That is engagement in learning, we'll discuss grades a little bit. And then we'll also look at the accountability measures that are, that are in place for this year. So let's start out at the top with engagement in learning, and this is, this is a very broad, uh, topic here. But, uh, what we do know is that our, uh, core subjects, uh, math, reading, uh, social studies and science, are they're having more difficulty, uh, than the electives in the middle school? Uh, for getting kids, uh, to, to be present and to do their work. So we, we see that, we see that in, in our middle school data. Uh, our lower engaged students, uh, weigh on the minds of teachers, and so that's what you hear often, is I, I'm worried about those students, what, what we don't have, well, we know there's a good chunk at every single school. There's no school in our district who, who's not struggling with some kids not coming. We don't know, we don't know to what, uh, to what degree that is. Uh, but that, that's what's weighing on the minds of teachers and we, and we know that from the times that we have been doing some professional development with teachers. And while they appreciate the professional development, they say, but what about? But what about Johnny or Tim or Juan or Rosalie, what about them? And that's what's, that's what's keeping them up at night, that's what is causing a lot of anxiety and so, um, so what we do know about that is, and, and I think that, I think the teachers all know this too, is that we do a lot of work trying to get a hold of them, so we call by phone. We are, for all schools, well, uh, eleven of, of our schools have, uh, parent liaisons. But the other schools generally either have, have a, uh, an assistant principal or some other administrative help to help them make calls home. So we have ho- uh, parent liaisons calling, principals are calling, uh, teachers are calling and secretaries are calling, and sometimes I, I've even heard nurses calling. Uh, these, those, those, try to do a well check, is everything okay, is everybody healthy, so, uh, so sometimes I know that some homes have been, uh, contacted by, by a school five times in, in one week. And maybe a couple of times per day, so I, I know that those stories are out there as well. I know that we've done home visits. And I know that our principals have gone out along with their parent liaisons. And in the middle schools, we also have had, uh, SROs, uh, go out to homes, uh, to do well checks, to find out what's happening. Why aren't you, uh, logging in, why aren't you present in class? And so those have been really good and eye-opening discussions, I think we heard, uh, earlier about a kindergartner, uh, being at home. By that, so we've also heard other things that maybe the third grader is taking care of the baby while the parents are at work too.
But are those situations that would happen anyway? Or is this, is it because of this that they're happening?
Well, I think the accountability of the attendance, you know.
No, I'm talking about like the third grader taking care of a baby.
Well, I'm saying if that would happen and you're, you've got school and you're, oh, so-and-so hasn't been here for a week, let's go, you know what I mean, we're now. They might still be logging in, they might.
I've not heard of that one to that degree before, because normally the kids would be in school, let's say from eight forty to three forty. And so I don't know where that baby is though, at, during that time. But I do know kids go home to take care of siblings, I know high schoolers go home and take care of the younger ones.
I was just thinking, like, when it's not a school day, is that third grader taking care of that baby?
Likely.
Nobody's making the child, forcing the child to go to school.
Yeah, we have to, and we have to be concerned about that. I know that some of our elementary principals have, um, been able to get the SROs to go with them as well, so, and that's been over, over and above, uh, what, for, for our SROs to do that, because.
Don't we, I don't, and this is my na- my negativity, I guess, but is there not a state law that says you cannot stay at home alone?
You had to be eleven-year, I thought eleven or twelve, or you could stay home legally by yourself.
There isn't, there's not anything that's, that we have a backbone that says state law requires you to, they can't be here by themselves.
I, I don't know.
Right, you know, and. The truancy law, they get a letter and then the parents don't like it, because then they pay a small fine and they have to go to court. So, they usually hate that.
So as, as, uh, school employees, we're mandatory reporters. And if we see a situation that. We see a situation that, uh, that would indicate neglect.
That, you're right.
Then that, that would be a mandatory reporting.
Right.
Well, mine just.
Scenario.
With personal, our neighbors up in Williams, it's a young couple. That were renting the house. They're no longer there, but they had two boys, seven, or excuse me, nine and seven. And they would leave them alone to go to Flagstaff. And they would leave them alone to go play a round of golf in the house. And they would leave, it was, and they got reported, the school in Williams got involved evidently. And they took the boys out of the house.
That, that would have been, uh, most likely that was a mandatory reporting situation where the educator filed a report with Child Protective Services. Because, because they felt there was neglect.
Well, the, the mother thought it was me, and so I was.
Oh, really?
I was not, it was ugly that day, but, um.
I'll bet.
Well.
But I just, I thought there was a state law that said that child.
I'm pretty sure there is.
Have supervision up until the age of whatever, so. Sorry to get off the subject.
No problem. And then the last way that we contact kids, of course, is all through, through the electronic, uh, resources that we have. So Class Dojo for Elementary, Remind for Middle School, Blackboard Connect, our emails. So there, there's lots of, um, uh, Synergy, which is our student information system. Those are all ways that, uh, that we are trying to, uh, connect with our kids at, at home. So our takeaway for this section is that, uh, we have too many students in this category who are not engaged. Um, and they're, and yet we, we know who they are. We are working, uh, we're trying to, uh, get ahold of those families, um, and, and continue to work, uh, with them as well. And we realize that we've got to build relationships with those families. We can't just come down and be hard nosed about. We've got, we have, we have to understand their circumstances and, and what is happening in, in their lives. And that way, then we could come alongside them and support them, uh, that way.
Dwayne, I think it's for the middle schools, i- it's very difficult. I was in San Diego this weekend and, and I helped a grandson with his home learning and he logged on. However, if it's a subject that he doesn't like, it, you can, you could automatically see the film. And he was doing, he's, he sat there because grandma was there, but he was totally unengaged. He could have cared less. He did not like English and, you know. She was, and the teacher, she was engaging the kids, asking questions and stuff and not, you know. So I can see the frustration. I can completely understand the teacher's frustration and, and at least the child was logged on for attendance. Cause he knew mom and dad were gonna find out, but he was not engaged in the subject just for the fact that it was not a favorite subject. So, you know, how are we going to try to address that, you know?
Yeah, so, so you're, you're exactly right. So and that's the part that teachers get frustrated about is I can't, I just can't be there by them. Because, you know, when you're in a classroom, you come alongside, you get down on your knees, you, you whisper in their ear. You make, you look to see if there's anything going on. We don't have that. We can look at them on the screen as best we can. We can hold them after class and find out to make sure that everything's okay. We can be encouraging to them, uh, but, but there's a difference. To do it electronically versus being there in person. And there's a lot to be said, and we all know about that human contact, how, how.
How important it is.
Uh, that is. The one thing that I do encourage, I, I always tell teachers as they tell me about, they're worried about this, the other, I said. But please remember that eighty-five, ninety percent of your kids are in your classroom. And they, they want the very best from you, so please make sure you do focus on them as well. And we'll reserve a, reserve a little piece in your, in your countenance or in your brain. That you can work on your other ten percent or your fifteen percent. But please remember that, you know, the vast majority of your kids are right there and, and they, and, and they're, they're trying. And they're trying to, to, to get through this whole pandemic as best they can as well. So our next section is grades. So this was an important, this is an important topic, uh, for us this year. Uh, grades are being given this year and, uh, we, reports were, reports. Oh, report cards were distributed after first quarter. And in addition, in the middle school, progress reports are given. So progress reports go out for middle school a week from this Friday. Uh, that'll be, that'll be their second quarter progress reports, uh, that will be going out. Some of the elementary schools do use progress reports. And then I would also remind, um, all of our parents that, uh, they can, they can go onto Synergy at any time. And the grades are right there and they can see how well their students are doing on a daily basis. So they don't have to wait for progress reports or even report cards because that information is dynamic and it changes all the time.
Really? And that's great for the engaged parent and the engaged child, but that disengaged child, probably the parent's not going in there to check.
Right, right. Uh, Mr. Sheldon wrote a letter, uh, that the principals used at the beginning of the year, uh, establishing the expectations around grading. So he wrote, and the principals got to use that to say, this is from, uh, our, our superintendent of schools. That grading will be done this year. It is important that your students, uh, keep up with their work. Because this is, this is a, a factor, uh, for, for this year.
Maybe that can be reiterated, like now we're into the second, whatever quarter, whatever. In that Friday little message that you send out, you know. You send out an update. Yeah, and just keep, keep plugging in that, remember.
Yeah, repetition never works.
Repetition works. Now, Dwayne, question. I know we are great at, at providing all of this t- technical information that's available via the internet. Has our migrant department or any department within our school district given, um, I guess via school, each school? For those parents that aren't tech, techie, how, how, how do you get on Synergy? Or how do you, you know, for them to be able to, you know, the, the, the kids have the Chromebooks at home. So the parents should be able to log on there so they can see. But has anybody given like a parent night or something, you know?
They do it one-on-one actually. So our migrant, our migrant advocates.
Great, great.
We have so, we have migrant advocates, migrant recruiters, so our migrant kids are in really good shape. You know, there's just, there's a lot of money sitting up in migrants. So they, they get taken care of very well. The other, our, our other students, uh, uh, get taken care of by the parent liaisons. They're the ones who are doing, uh, a lot of the one-on-one. They call the parents. And, and then they will walk them through how to do it. They're doing an outstanding job.
How many?
And I've also heard that our parent, para-librarians are involved in this, in this as well. Our para-librarians often serve as the, the, um, the iPad.
Right.
Now, we have Chromebooks as well, so now we're iPad slash Chromebooks, um, in our district. And so they're becoming the experts and they're talking to parents quite a bit too, about how to, how to maneuver around there and how to bring up those. I know our principals talk and, uh, talk to parents as well. They're, they're a key person as well. So have we done formal nights like that? No, but I know it's happening, it's really happening one-on-one. And finding out who needs that information and how are we giving it to them?
Great, great. That's great to hear.
How many parent liaison, uh, schools have parent liaisons?
Eleven.
Oh, eleven, that's, and are those Title I funded or how, how are those?
They are, oh, I, four, I think there are four different funding mechanisms.
Eleven, that's good.
Yeah, we, everything, uh, different titles, M and O, uh, different ones.
Yeah.
ELG, uh, is in there as well.
Eleven.
TSI, uh, is funding one. So we have, yeah, different, just lots of different ways. We've been real creative in, in getting that.
That's great.
Getting that done. So at the end of first quarter, um, towards the end of first quarter, we talked about, uh, the grading and, uh, and report cards during the pandemic. And here's some philosophy that we had to help teachers, um, adopt. Because this is a different environment, being in a pandemic, you're learning from home and you're at school part of the time. So, and, and we've all known when you grew up that, hey, the end of first quarter, it was the end of first quarter and that was it. And, you know, if you didn't do that well, then you hope that you did better second quarter. Well, we want to massage that a little bit because we know that this is new, this is something that we're not used to. So we look at our, we look at some of our different, uh, things that we could do. No F is final. So any student at any time can, can go back with, I'm sure they're gonna need parent support to go back and say, I want to make up that F from first quarter. You are welcome to do that. Now it's going, you, that means there's probably some worth that, I mean, you know, it's not a freebie. It's go back and demonstrate that you know that standard now. And that's what you're gonna have, that's what we've, uh, we're encouraging people to allow and, and encourage students to do. Uh, so if that, so if you get a phone call, uh, anything like that, you'd say, yes, you know what, we want them to go back and make up. Because the whole, remember what, we are a learning institution. So we don't want to cut off anybody's learning and say, well, no, you can't, you can't learn that anymore. Nope, we want you to learn it and we want you to go back and learn it. Uh, grades can be altered and that's kind of goes back in, any grade at any time. We want, we want people to be, we want teachers to encourage kids, hey, you didn't do that well on this one, do it again. Demonstrate to me that you, that you are learning, um, and that, that's what we really want, uh, uh, to get across. We also help working with teachers that not every academic standard is equal. Some, some standards are more important than, than other standards to learn. Uh, there are some, you know, if you, when you talk to the public, I just want the kids to know how to, um, add, subtract, multiply, divide, right? And make change, right? Cause that's the big one, make change. If we could have all of our kids make change, we would win. It wouldn't matter anything else, but if they can make change, we would win. You know, those type of things. But some standards are just simply more important than others and, and we're helping teachers. We take some makeups we talked a little bit about. Grades need to be equitable and meaningful, uh, and so you have to really work that, that there are no biases. Involved in your, in your grading systems or that one group of students maybe who are working at home. Don't have the same opportunity for a grading experience than the kids at school or vice versa. So, so that's, 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 that's challenging. You have to think all the way through those things. Success does not depend on the conditions of the home. We can't control what goes on always at the home, but we can control when kids are online and the work that we're giving to them. Um, but we never, we never, um, uh, but we have to be very careful about, about making any stereotypes about what is happening at home. Or making any judgments about what's happening at home. Low expectation leads to inequity. So the one thing that research is constantly, uh, telling us is do not lower your expectations. And then, and they've, they've challenged us to keep those expectations there and figure out ways for kids to, to meet those expectations. And it might require more scaffolds, more resources for us to, to help them. Uh, grades should guide our future, uh, decisions and our future instruction. And evaluation of student work should be based on their best evidence, which is often their latest evidence that they give to us. So you might practice, 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 and then, oh, I finally got it. But they finally got it, they got it. That's the victory. Um, and that's what, that's what we want, uh, teachers to, to focus in on is the victory. You don't have to worry that they got, only got twenty-five percent on that first assignment. It's irrelevant now because they got it. And so, so those are different, those are different philosophical positions that we're, that we're working, uh, with teachers this year on that one. So our takeaway, our takeaway here is that grades are being given and that's important for you to know, uh, as you, as you, uh, talk with parents if they're having questions about that.
Just a comment.
Sure.
This may be something whenever we do get back to normal teaching that we want to look at.
Isn't?
That no F is final or grades can be altered.
Yeah, this is really.
Especially for those kids that, that, you know, they had just fallen through the cracks somewhere. And at the to, the timing is not good, but yet you know eventually they're gonna get it.
Yes.
So that F doesn't have to be a final.
Yeah.
I mean, I just think maybe we need to keep that, this in the back of our heads.
We do, and that, and that is strongly, it's, it's, um, the pandemic has actually helped many people move in many, many different ways. And grading is one of those areas that the pandemic is actually forcing people to think differently about how to do this.
Goes back to the old thing, you know, people that don't take tests very well, but your grades depends on your test.
Yeah.
And if you're rigid, you don't, you don't allow, uh, people to go back and demonstrate success, that, that's really de-motivating.
Right, right, right.
Then you have a larger group of people who disengage, whether they're sitting there in the classroom or not.
Yeah, that's true.
And our last area this afternoon is accountability. Um, and, uh, accountability is here. We, we do not have any waivers to any accountability, uh, this year. So AZM, AZM two will be given in the springtime, uh, to all of our students. We, uh, we give, we gave Galileo reported on, on that to you last month. Acadian's reading is our K two reading test that we give. Some of you might remember the word dibbles. This is just a variation of dibbles. Azella is our, our English language, uh, test. All of those are, are here and we use all of them. Our next one is MOWR, that is Move On When Reading.
Yeah.
And remember, there's a law for all of our third graders that they must pass the AZM two for them to be promoted to fourth grade. That is still on the books. That has not been waived this year. And so, uh, and just to remind you that we send home, uh, we send home a letter annually to all of our K three, uh, parents. And it reminds them of this law. Okay, so all of them get that every single year. And then when we, uh, when we have kids in interventions in the class, we send home a separate letter. That describes their interventions to the parents and what parents can do and what we are doing with our kids. And we must remember that there is the absences that are mandated by law. And after ten days attendance, the, the ten day attendance drop still is mandated by law. And so we're, and so my encouragement from my office is when we get those phone calls is. If you had, um, any type of, um, communication in ten days, they're still on the books. So we're being a little bit, we're being as liberal and broad as we can. Normally, I don't think that would normally happen in a normal traditional year. But for this year, if you get a phone call one day and you talk to that parent, please don't drop them. It means, okay, so you got them. Did you take advantage of that phone call? What is their issue? How can we support them? And how can we get that family back? So the ten day drop is, we, we have lost total communication, all communication with them for ten days. And, and that's when we have dropped them. And even, uh, even with that, uh, principals and secretaries are very leery of doing that. I said, but yes, but the law just really requires us to, uh, to do that. But it doesn't mean that you have, that you can just put them to the side. Why don't you, why don't you call them continuously? Where are you? Did you find a school? Would you like to come back? Though, because we still have, we still have access to who they are. We're just not, they're just no longer, we're not getting paid for that student.
That flexibility that, uh, Mr. Shepherd was talking about, that's, that's authorized through the governor's executive order as well. Additional flexibility on, on taking role, because we know there are some kids who are, um, maybe, maybe they're, they're remote, but they're not logging in. But they're, they're looking, they're, uh, doing the recorded lessons and doing the work and turning in. Maybe they're turning it in, you know, maybe they're not turning.
It timely.
Maybe they're turning things in, in chunks. Um, so the, the governor's executive order authorized schools, uh, quite a bit of flexibility.
Good.
In, in attendance, but that ten day rule is still in effect.
Wow.
That's a funding issue.
Have we dropped students? Have we had to drop students?
Oh, yes.
How many, like a lot?
I have no idea.
We have to.
That one, I, I, we'd have to, we'd have to look.
Yeah, cause wannabe is accommodating.
Yeah, we'd reach out to them.
Right.
Yeah. Usually, um, I would say mostly, we, we do make contact with most parents within a two week time. Within the ten days, we're making some type of contact with them. Uh, but just, I got a phone call the other day, said that, they said, we have lost all contact with them. So the first thing we do is, um, we, uh, turn off their eye, their iPads because we can, we have full control. We turn off their iPad in their hotspot to see if that will get a phone call back, you know. But, you know, so, and then, and then we'll go out and get it and see if, um, and try, and try to pick those things up.
I normally do learn things in these meetings, but I really did learn something today. I didn't know it was mandated by law. I knew we dropped them after ten days.
Oh, oh.
I didn't know that was a law.
Serious auditor.
Wow.
Yeah, that's a funding, that's a funding issue.
Yeah.
So then we have to go back to the last day of attendance to drop them as of that date. So that, so that we don't get paid for those ten days.
Okay.
Where they were absent.
You don't want those legislators paying any money for, for that.
Right.
Uh, come January, official letters of intent to retain will be sent out. We do that every year regardless. It's our, it's in January. I know some of those conversations have already begun with parents. Just not, not to make parents angry or anything, but just to say, right now, this is what the data, the data says for your child. Please be aware of this. And then officially, some of those letters would go home in January.
And this is, would be where not all grades are final comes in.
That's right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Well, there's, there's, there's supposed to be a plan.
Yeah, yes, yeah, there's a whole, a whole plan then. So I have a feeling that summer school is going to be important to our district this year. And so our takeaway, there's all accountability measures for Arizona are in place and will be administered this year. Any que, any more questions?
Are schools still doing interventions?
Interventions?
Uh huh.
So, yes, in a couple of different ways. One, now that we're in a hybrid mode, there, there are some, there are little chunks of time to do small groups. There's the hour and a half about, and sometimes up to an hour and a half of lunch that some groups are being, are, are meeting in there. I've heard that one. And I've also heard after school as well. Some, some teachers are just saying, hey, I need you to come back on so I can give you some, some personal time. I know that our, our paraprofessionals, along with the reading teachers in classroom are giving intervention. So they're actually doing some pull-out of, of some of those kids. They do it strategically so they're not missing reading while you're in intervention. That's not, that's not real productive. And so, so they'll find the best time to do those small groups with those kids.
That's good. Dwayne, how is it, how is overall attendance going since it's being done electronically this year?
It is. Most of our schools are, have a, know what to do. The, the issue comes with frustrated teachers who say things, you know what? You only showed up to my class for five minutes. I am marking you absent, you know? And yes, you know, that makes sense. If you were only there for five minutes out of 16 minutes, I want to mark you absent, but the law says, no, you're going to mark them present. And, and so it doesn't, it doesn't hold well for the teachers. But I, I think that, I think we have the secretaries and, and understanding, no, we have to, we have to mark them present, even though you, you said that, that so has to happen. So, yeah, there's just so many ways to mark kids present. Remember, you know, they could do the work asynchronously. They could turn in, maybe the, we have a few kids who have to use packets. So they, they turn in their packets at the end of the week, you go back and you know what? They get credit for all of those days because all of their work is done. That's, that's one way to demonstrate attendance as well.
My other question is, are special ed referrals still being made?
Yes, so the SAT process is in, is in place as well. And this year for the SAT process, just so that you know, we've added two preschool specialists for, so when preschoolers are being SAD-ed this year, that they will be, so we have two specialists who will sit on those teams to help with that process. Yes. The SAT process is mandated by law, the federal, that's not waived. And so, so teachers do refer and then that team is set up.
Kind of hard to identify them.
It's very, yes, it's very difficult. And then to do all the, to do all the tests, you know, once you go forth with special ed testing, you know, how do you, how do you do that in a safe environment? And that you can, you can make that legitimate and a valid test too.
Okay. Well, great.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dwayne.
Okay, that, well, that was a lot of information, I think, over the course of two hours. Good information, I hope, and valuable. If there's.
Yes, very.
Other questions, I think, you know, some of the takeaways, I think, you know, what we're looking at right now, and I keep talking about this idea of continuity. Kim referred to the fact and Luciano and Suzie as well, that we have had kids who have either tested positive or become sick, but they've been on this, they've been on the two-day. So there haven't been any, they hadn't been in school for close to a week. So there, there was no worry about close contacts and other kids in, in the classroom having been sick. Of the kids who we've had who are sick, that's been, that's been the majority of the scenarios. So that, to me, that's, that's a validating piece of our, of our, our current model. If you have to shut down the classroom, and I don't like to use that terminology, we can talk about that. If you have to pivot or transition to fully remote, that's a disruption, right? So the, the less we have to do that, the more continuity we have in our, in our program. And in a scenario where you have more kids who are there five days a week and you're not able to follow the, the social distancing guidelines and so on, then as each, each potential illness, whether it's COVID or whether it's something else, but we have to assume COVID until we know differently, creates a greater disruption. So I think that there's, there's significant evidence. I know, I know there's people who, who are encouraging us to move forward and I understand that. I under, and I've said two or three times, I know we're a little more aggressive than some and not quite as aggressive as others so far. But I think our, you know, mitigation plan was set up for the current scenario that we, that we have. It's, it's effective. It's being proven effective. We have about 26 school days to go until, until winter break. So. And I think, so I think that, that we're, we have the best plan in place for the best continuity of, of operations for now. And I think we need to continue to, to monitor. And every week we're getting more information to monitor, like the information about zip codes. I just got that email to me on Monday. That's, that's a whole new dataset to monitor. So as we get more information to monitor and as more, as the conditions develop locally in terms of testing, I mean, what, what Ryan talked about today could be a game changer, you know, being able to have that kind of quick response. So I think we need to keep monitoring, but my, our belief is that, that continuing to stay the course with what we're doing right now and monitor is going to be, going to be the best path forward for this, the rest of the year.
And I think that's where your survey comes in.
Right.
It's beneficial. Your staff is saying their top five reasons.
Yeah.
And it's all predicated on numbers and studies and.
Which.
We need to meet these, this criteria before they're comfortable.
Yeah.
I think that tells all, that tells the story. That's the ones that are in the trenches are the ones saying, it's.
Right, right.
It's not good till these things are met. So I think that's a, that's a great takeaway from that survey.
Right, exactly. I feel the same way. It was like, oh my gosh, it was an, it was an eye-opener.
Yeah, the survey was very validating. And the fact that the principals really are taking this as an opportunity to, to drill down, I mean, it's so amazing to be able to work in a school district where you have building level leaders who are, they, I mean, the, the level of integrity and the level of just sincerity that they take in their job. You, you never hear somebody say, well, that's, that's district's job or that's.
Right.
Somebody else's job. It's like, well, so often, and, and the, the norm is for our building principals to say, well, let us take this then and, and take it to the next step and then, and, and work together. And, and that's what we got out of that survey too. Our, you know, our teachers are going to, our principals are going to drill down with their staff and I think we're going to learn so much from those conversations. And, and like Luciano said, people knew how they feel, know how they feel mostly, but nobody really had any suggestions for how to, how they would feel better. But I think through, through facilitated conversations at each site in a smaller, more intimate group, those are likely to come out, you know.
Right, right.
I, I just can't say enough about the, the building level leadership in our, in our district.
It's amazing. I think that we did well by waiting for the benchmarks. And I think we have to continue that. We must continue to follow the experts. Why would we not? And, you know, we can't select a date or anything like that. We just have to go step by step.
Yeah, that's a little bit unsettling, right? It's like, well, we don't know what's going to happen.
Right. But I agree that we shouldn't do anything before break, uh, winter break. I mean, we should continue what we're doing. Even if things look good, I still think we should continue. That's just my thought.
Right.
And our teachers and staff are working hard. They are working like, I mean, they are working and they're getting better every day, you know. Your, your greatest learning curve is when you're really off balance, right? So they say skiers never get better if they never fall down. And right now our teachers, I mean, for the most part, they're off balance because this is so new.
Yeah, right, right.
But that means that the learning curve is, you know, is in effect right now. And if we can help keep, keep them safe and continue to learn what it is they need and help provide those things, then as we've been saying from the beginning, we're going to come out of this better than we were before.
Right.
Because the, the, the depth and breadth of, of the skills that our teachers have when they come out of this is going to be dramatically greater than it was coming in.
And I agree with Irene. You know, as a board member, it would be reckless of us to just mandate that you go back to school, traditional. I would just, that would just not be a prudent, diligent board member. And I think we just need to stay, stay the course.
Yeah.
And just give everybody all the support that we can.
Right. And you know, people call us.
Yeah, if people call us, we can just say. Time to call Jamie.
Yeah, we are, I mean, we are being cautious, but.
Yes, but I don't think we as board members need to.
The.
We need to stay the course along with you guys.
Right, right.
And we, you know, as Luciano pointed out, we've got a lot of teachers who, who could rightly request accommodations or leave in the absence and, and haven't. And I think that, so what's the disruption to the continuity? If, if we run into a situation where another 15 or 20 teachers say, well, I'm not going to be able to do that. I'm not going, and, and then we, then we turn around and we're putting subs in the classroom. Well, that's, that's a disruption as well.
Right, right.
So I think we're, like I said, we're being a little bit cautious, although being more aggressive than a couple of districts in the area. But I think in the end, having maintained not only the continuity of the program, but also the continuity of the, of the faculty is going to, is going to play out in our favor in the long run.
Right.
I agree. And it's even more important now with the uncertainty. So at least have that continuity in the teacher.
Right, that's true. That survey was the best information.
Yeah, that was a game changer.
Yeah.
Everybody give Luciano a thumbs up.
Yeah.
Thumbs up.
Yeah, and he does such a great job of visualizing the data.
Yes. That's so helpful, Luciano.
Okay, well, we have, we're about 27 minutes over. Apologize for that.
We had a lot of.
I assure the whole team that we'd be done by five.
Sorry.
Yeah, we appreciate, you know.
Call me a liar.
Suzie, Dwayne, Cindy.
So, and, you know, if you have any other questions that I can answer through, you can file a report. Feel free to email me or if something comes up tonight and it's like.
I appreciate the heads up when the, there's been a change in classroom.
Transition to fully remote.
Right, right. That has been very helpful. Yeah, we need to.
Greatly. That, because I appreciate not getting it in a Friday report, just getting it when it's happening.
Right, right. That is, I agree with Karen. It's much nicer.
Yeah, I told Jamie the, the story, the poor superintendent in Williams. He had that issue and he did not tell his board members until the next day. And Williams is a very small community and he took a lot of heat for not getting his board members on board. They were not happy with him, so. It was very, it was a very uncomfortable board meeting.
We don't want this.
Well, between Alice and me, we'll try to make sure we stay on top of things.
You always do.
Yes.
Okay, Christian. Okay.
Want to gavel us out of here?
Right. There being, there being no other information, I close this meeting, study session out.
If I had it, I'd be like, good job.